Time of six o'clock, I call the meeting of the Etoka City Council order, ask everyone to rise as we do the pledge of allegiance. Place the flag, salute, uh pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you again so much for the stay, Lord, for the chance to gather here. Lord, I pray for our community. Lord, I pray that you would continue to work in this place and we continue to bring you honor and glory in it all. Lord, we're thankful for Jesus and we ask us all in his mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
So, we have a little different agenda this evening, which is very well needed for the occasion. I'm gonna ask Assistant Chief Mr. Sneed come up and help, help us with this. Mr. City Manager, if you'd help me. We have several officers that are gonna be awarded, an award of valor this evening. And I'll let Assistant Chief read this. While most citizens run away from harm and are scared, our guys and women run to it. So, Assistant Chief, take off.
Okay, this is a quick synopsis of what occurred on May 30th, 2025 involving four of our, members of our police department. It could have been more detailed, but so much happened to them that day, but we'd be here all night if I wrote everything that, that occurred. So, anyway, on May 30th, 2025 at 12:36 hours, Lieutenant Jimmy Taylor and Chief Gene Dotson had stopped a vehicle at the Arby's parking lot for suspicion of shoplifting at the Etoka Walmart store. While on the stop, the officers could clearly view that the items that had been reported stolen from Walmart. The officers requested the driver to exit the vehicle. There were two passengers in, also in the vehicle. The driver did not comply and took off from the scene, nearly dragging Chief Dotson, who was attempting to open the vehicle door to apprehend the suspect. A pursuit occurred where many members of different agencies were involved. The suspect struck in a Etoka Sheriff's Department vehicle and continued to flee. The pursuit ended on US Highway 69 north of Fred's Fish Camp Road, where the suspect struck another vehicle. The suspect's vehicle become inoperable and the driver fled the vehicle with a rifle. Master Patrol Officer Cheyenne Gilbert and Patrolman Zachary Rice also arrived to the conclusion of the vehicle pursuit. The suspect ran to a wooded area along the side of the roadway. The two remaining passengers were being placed under arrest while the suspect with the rifle began shooting towards the officers. Officers returned fire towards the suspect. The officers did not retreat, but instead found cover with their patrol units during the gunfire exchange. To me, that's very important. That's the integrity of this police department. The officers then viewed the suspect, walked to the center median with his hands raised. The officers tactically grouped together and walked towards the suspect, giving commands. The officers reached the suspect's location and applied handcuff restraints to the suspect. A further investigation revealed that the suspect was in a stolen vehicle and that other firearms were found inside the stolen vehicle. And then, it just goes on the last little paragraph. Given my opinion that I believe Chief Dotson, Lieutenant Taylor, MPO Cheyenne Gilbert, and Patrolman Zach Rice acted above and beyond the call of duty. And therefore, I recommend that these four officers should receive an award of valor.
Absolutely.
Last but not least, Chief Dotson. Chief, thank you for this, knowing this is the program of your service. Yeah, yeah. Will we, can we get all the officers up front with the council to take the photograph, please? It'd be much, much appreciated.
I'd like to give all of our officers a big hand again.
Do you wanna do up there?
Yeah, you wanna do up there?
Cause I'm kinda very.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking.
I knew you were. Sneed, Taylor, you don't want to crash down this little bit. I'm on my tippy toes. Jimmy said, "I'm trying, man." And Assistant Mayor said, "Let's, uh, let's give these guys a round of applause." Thank you all. Sir, thank you. What's that? Yeah, I'll fix it. I'll fix it, say it here, just a second. So, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're gonna take a short 15-minute recess. So, we'll return back at. Six twenty, yeah, six twenty-three. Thank you. And we have cake and punch.
We will reconvene our city council meeting and again, I want to thank all the officers of the Otoka Police Department for their, for these gentlemen that we honored here tonight, but not only them, but also the job that all, chief, all your officers do to protect this community and keep it safe. Valid point is today at lunch, you know, just seeing your officers go into a building that was having an issue to make sure it was cleared and that all the citizens were safe. So tell all your officers again, thank you.
Every day.
This is something they do every day. So as we move down the agenda, this is the public comment time. This is anything that's not on the post agenda. We address the council at this time and hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. I'm sorry, the consent agenda.
Can we take roll first?
Oh, we need to take roll. We should, we should probably do that. Thank you.
Yeah, we should when we reconvene meeting, yes.
Mr. City Attorney, where are you? You're supposed to catch these things. How about we do, how about I come back? No, we didn't. We did the pledge of allegiance and we took off. How about we do roll call? We're just, I had cake and punch on my mind after that. Roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. Poe? Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Thank you for catching that. We greatly appreciate it. Johnny, you get one to merit. Public comment time again. Didn't hear any, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is kind of a new structure, but this should help kind of speed things along. Under the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes from September eighteenth, the city manager's report and approving blanket purchase orders for the month of October. Do any of these items need to be removed for individual consideration? From any council member? If not?
This is me.
So this is intended to speed up the meeting.
Okay.
From this point forward, we will probably be putting a lot of things in the consent agenda. So all three of these items can be approved with one vote. So this is kind of intended, you know, for reoccurring things. So at this point, any one of you could make a motion to approve the consent agenda and they would all be passed.
A, B, and C without doing them individually?
Correct.
Okay.
If there's something that any member of the council wishes to discuss separately and what, then you can ask for it to be removed from the consent agenda and then we will take it up under the business agenda separately. But ideally, you will have reviewed it ahead of time and you'll know when we come to the consent agenda, hey, I want to review the blanket purchase orders individually because I have questions about those. So then you would say, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove the purchase orders from the consent agenda and then we wouldn't take it up.
So if I had a question about one of them and we'd already approved it, could, and I forget to ask that question, can I go back and say, hey, so that's when I, okay. So I need to, any questions that I have concerning any three of these, I need to bring them up in this issue. Right?
So currently right now, if there was anything on the purchase orders or the city manager's report you wanted to discuss individually, if you look down on the business?
Sometimes I just like to make comments, like.
You can make a comment.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can come in on any one of them.
I mean, what if I forget during this time? I just can't make a comment.
You can make it during.
Trusty comments. Okay. All right, I'll do that. Okay.
All right. So these are the three items under the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. So since there was no items removed, we can go to item number two, correct, sir?
Okay, let me ask a question. Why would we remove any of these items?
If you wanted to vote on it separately, say you didn't want to vote to approve the city manager's report because you didn't think he was doing his job this week. You would vote to remove that so you could vote yes on the remaining portion of the consent agenda, but you could vote no on something else that you wanted to.
Okay, so if I saw something in the, in the city manager's report that I'd like to discuss, I would say I, I want to.
Remove it.
Remove it and then we'll talk about that separately.
Sure.
Okay.
And then we would do that on the item?
This just happened. Y'all did this without me?
This is the first meeting with this.
Okay.
Yeah, we're using you in. I only put three things on it this time to get you guys accustomed to it.
I'm like, what is this?
In the future, Susan, we'll probably start putting more of the, if it's something we know ahead of time is going to be a
Okay.
controversial or something with questions, then we won't put it there in the first place.
All right then, okay.
But again, it gives you the ability to remove anything that you would like off of the consent agenda and put it on the regular business.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. Item number two, under the business agenda, discussion and/or action on adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, adopting the terms and conditions of the USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant Agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents required to accept the grant. Mr. Deley, is this one to you?
Yeah, that resolution is on attachment number four. I had put in for two police units about a year ago through USDA grant. And anyway, we were awarded forty-nine six to go forward the purchase of two vehicles. So that's what's before you tonight. And then the following question will, will tell the two vehicles that were wanted to purchase with the grant. Which would leave us paying forty-five nine ninety-five and the grant would be forty-nine six. So it would be getting two for the price of one, actually a little better than the price of one on this one.
Any discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the purchase of a twenty twenty-six Dodge Durango in the amount of forty-six thousand one seventy-five and a twenty twenty-five Ford F-150 in the amount of forty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from Vance Country Ford for the police department.
Those are the two vehicles I just mentioned. Like I said, the grant pays forty-nine six and then we would be paying forty-five nine ninety-five.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action on adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, adopting the terms and conditions of the rural USDA Rural Development Communities Facility Grant Agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents required to accept the grant.
That resolution pertains to two vehicles for capital improvement. It's the same as the other grant. It gives us fifty thousand toward the purchase of two vehicles for them, which will be discussed in the following as far as the amounts.
Do you have any questions? I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the purchase of two twenty twenty-five Ford F-250s in the amount of one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and four dollars from Vance Country Ford for capital improvements.
As I mentioned, the grant will pay fifty thousand and we will pay fifty-two nine oh four and we'll get the new vehicles for that.
Mr. Deley, thank you for your work on this all the time, keeping us up to that. That is.
Pleasantly surprised because like I said, it's been over a year ago since I put in for these, so I figured I wasn't getting them.
Not surprised.
Getting free cars left and right. It was kind of like Christmas.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number six, discussion and/or action on adopting or rejecting resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen concerning bridge inspection responsibility by local government for compliance with national bridge inspection standards. Who do I throw this one to, Seth?
This is something we approve every year.
Okay.
As far as if a bridge is inspected, we always just use the same company that the county uses.
Yes.
Because I would assume there's not a lot of companies inspect bridges.
Yeah, we just go ahead and go, always recommend to go with the same one the county's using. That way they're, the same companies are doing all of them.
Okay, very good.
That way they're consistent.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I recommend approving.
Thank you. Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number seven, discussion and/or action on ordinance number six seventeen, amending the municipal bond schedule in appendix four, schedule of fines and penalties in the Otoka City Code, providing for servability, providing a for repealer and declaring an emergency. And that will need to be done in two separate votes on the emergency, correct?
This is just updating our bond schedule. The chief came to me, I don't know, maybe four or five months ago, wanting to increase everything by about twenty-five dollars just to compensate for the increased jail costs that we were facing and dispatch costs. We, anyway, we finally got it all put together and ready for your approval. There were a few items that went down slightly because our ordinance provided for a lower fine than what we were proposing to increase it. But generally, everything remained at a twenty-five dollar increase. And you have a copy of it there.
Does this have to be posted anywhere or anything else?
Publish it in a newspaper and we have to update our ordinance book at the county law library. Outside of those two things, that's what's required.
I recommend approving if there's any questions.
Have a motion on Florida here second.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Also, do I have here a motion to declare an emergency?
I'll make that motion for an emergency.
Okay. And a second. Have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number eight, discussion with city attorney regarding the requirements of State Open Meetings Act and State Open Records Act.
Well, good afternoon. Since we have a new member of the council, I thought it would be a good opportunity to spend a few minutes discussing the requirements of the Open Meetings Act with you guys, just to make sure we're all still mindful of our obligations there. Councilman McDaniel, this is the one area that can get you put in jail, so it's the one that I take the most serious. The state law requires that all discussions and actions that a municipal council or public board takes must be done in an open meeting with a properly posted agenda. Now, I won't get into a lot of the details on a properly posted agenda tonight because it's really Susan's responsibility and I work with her to make sure that we comply with that. But generally, you know, a regular meeting requires twenty-four hour posting, a special meeting requires forty-eight hours. And then there's also an emergency meeting, which during my time here, we've had one of those. And I'll either tell you you can have it or you can't. So we'll worry about that if we ever need to do that. Violations of the Open Meeting Act, if they're found to be willful, results in the action that you took being void. And sometimes that leaves you in a position where you can't necessarily act on something that you want to. A neighboring city ten or twelve years ago wanted to fire their city manager and members of the council got together in an unlawful public meeting. Probably, I think it was a phone call. They all kind of got together and let's do this and let's fire him. And, you know, when it came to light, their decision to fire the city manager not only was found to be void, but that same council then could not move forward and fire the city manager because they had made that decision in an unlawful meeting. So it really can put the city in a bad position, even if they wanted, even if there was good reason to fire the city manager. They were left in a position where they might not be able to do that. In addition to the items being void, it is also considered a criminal misdemeanor and that you can be fined by five hundred dollars and up to a year in the county jail. And so while DAs historically have not prosecuted this very often, I will tell you that more and more prosecutions across the state are occurring because of this. And so I take it very seriously. That's why you'll, you'll see me hang around until a quorum is no longer present after the meetings because I want to make sure, not that you won't violate it, but I want to make sure that there's not even the appearance that you guys might be violating it. So we're going to talk about the appearance a little bit more in a minute. But the most important thing for you guys to remember is obviously you can only discuss and take action on items that are listed on the agenda. And the language on the agenda must be plain and reasonably calculated to ensure the public can understand what's going to be discussed and acted upon. So in other words, you can't just say discussion and action on, you know, the budget. No, it needs to say, you know, what budget are we acting on? What are we doing? Are we increasing it? Are we decreasing it? So you've got to have language in there that is specific as to what's going on. Another municipal municipality that I represent sent me a proposed agenda and it had like three acronyms. Discussion, this, and this, and this. And I'm like, I don't even know what the acronyms are and I'm the city attorney. So I think you probably need to fill that in a little bit more, so. Also, meetings must be open to the public. You, you must allow anybody who wants to come in, must be able to come in and watch the proceedings. However, being open does not give the public a right to participate in the meeting. And this is probably one of the things that causes more consternation across the state than any other issues. We still have public participation on our agenda. Most city attorneys have removed it from their municipal bodies because it does create problems at times. We haven't yet. It's never really been a problem and we control it well. But if you have a mayor that doesn't keep control of their meetings, it can sometimes cause more problems than the benefits that come from it. So many cities are moving away from that at this point. But it's important for you to understand when someone comes up here, under public comments time, they have freedom of speech, so you can't control their speech. You know, obviously, we have some very limited rules on vulgar and decent speech.
Threatening and intimidation.
But outside of that, they can come up here and call the mayor whatever names that they want to and they've got three minutes to say whatever they want to. If they want to come and, you know, read from the Bible or read from the Quran or stand up there and do whatever they want, perform a little dance. They can do whatever they want. And there's not really anything you can do about it, other than sit there and watch. Likewise, if they do come up here and tell, you know, Mayor Kathy that, you know, he's big bad meanie head who doesn't know what he's doing, you can engage with them. This is public comment time. So you cannot, even if they had a legitimate question. So you cannot, even if they had a legitimate question, you know, you cannot answer that question or engage with them, or you've now violated the Open Meetings Act, because you're having a discussion with someone about an item that's not properly on the agenda. So, that creates another problem, people get mad, they come up and they expect answers from you, and when their three minutes are up, you say, thank you for your comments, and then usually, the mayor looks at me and I say, I'm sorry, they can't address your matter, because it's not on the agenda. And then they get mad, because they come here expecting answers and didn't get them. Now, Councilman, we have a, a public requested agenda form, that if there is something one of your constituents wants to discuss with the council, they can request that it be put on the agenda, and it does require a council member to sign off on that before it goes onto the agenda. But some, so sometimes they may bring them to you and say, hey, I want this on the agenda, and have you sign some forms. That's another way that we allow the public to engage with the council and have stuff put on the agenda. And in that scenario, you would be able to talk with them about it, because it would be on the, on the agenda ahead of time. Other things that I don't like, and you'll sometimes see me start eyeballing the mayor, and sometimes interrupt on his reports and trustee comments. Reports I don't like, and I, you know, if you're going to discuss with the city manager, an item that's on his report, the reports have to be attached to the agenda when they're posted. If you were to come in without having given your, submitted your agenda ahead of time, or your report ahead of time, I'm not going to allow you to talk about it, because the public didn't know what was in his report, within the times required by the law, so we're not going to talk about it. Trustee comments, that's an opportunity for you guys to make comments. It's not an opportunity for you guys to ask questions or engage in discussions. You know, even if you're not making a decision, the law says you can't discuss matters that are not on the agenda. So, while it may seem, you know, kind of silly, you bring up, hey, how did fall cleanup go? And then all of a sudden, we're talking about fall cleanup in trustee comments, that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So, really, the only thing you can do is talk about and act on things that are on the agenda, and anything else really needs to not be had. A lot of city attorneys have took public trustee comments off of their agendas as well, because it just creates situations where they can get into trouble. But usually here, I usually try to police that, I think we, we had an issue with one of the council members' last meeting that I was here. But, so I usually try to keep you out of trouble, and if I do interrupt and say, let's move on, it's not because I'm trying to be rude, or I'm trying to, you know, interrupt your, your business, but it's usually because I want to keep you out of jail, so just know that.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, trustee comments, you know, sometimes things you want to thank people and that sort of thing, so I wouldn't, you know.
Yeah, you can absolutely do that, you know, you can recognize somebody.
But that's not going to be on the agenda.
No, but you're the only one commenting about it.
Okay.
If Kobe says, yes, you did a great job, thank you, you guys have now discussed it, right? But if you want to make that comment, you absolutely can, you guys just can't discuss it as a body.
Well, let's go back to, like you said, like when they come up, and they, a lot of times they're going to come up in the hostile, they're already mad, and you're saying that we're, we can, they're going to call us whatever, whether it's racist, whatever, because I'm not going to sit here. I'll walk out and go on and do what I need to do, you know, I'm not going to do that.
Sure.
You know, I'm not going to let a person, I'll just, I'll just leave, so I need some clarification on that.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you cannot.
I mean, I'm assuming that what I need to do.
Disagree with their speech, if you open it up for public comments, you can't censor those comments, regardless of how indecent, well, there are some, there are some boundaries, but it, it's pushing it, you know, like it's, it's, burning flag is protected speech, right? So, it's, there's not a lot that you can censor, okay? So, you know, your options are, you know, walk out and come back in after it's over, after the three minutes are over, or we take public comments off altogether. But once you allow it, you can't start censoring it, which we've never had any problems with it generally, not that I've ever.
We, we've had a few, and we had, we, like you said.
I mean, there's been police presence here, Johnny, when you're not here, so.
Well, I remember the one guy who got arrested, but.
But, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to let them call me names.
But that was actually an agenda item for that evening.
That one was, you're right, yeah, he, he had an agenda item, so.
But, okay.
The other thing is, anytime that you have a quorum of the council or one of the boards, and you're discussing city business outside of this chamber and outside of a posted agenda, you have violated the Open Meetings Act, right? So if you guys get together at Chili's one night, and you're having a birthday dinner, and all of a sudden, you start talking about the water treatment plant, if there's three or more of you together doing that, you've now violated the Open Meetings Act. So my advice to you guys is, don't do it. Generally, it's never a good idea for, you know, three or more of you to be together in public, even if it's completely innocent. You just don't do it, because it creates an appearance, you know, your neighbor will see, oh, three of the council members were at Chili's last night, I wonder what they were talking about. You could be talking about the weather, but they're going to automatically think that you're talking about whatever the hot button issue of the day is. And so then they make the allegation, and regardless if it's not true, do you have any witnesses to rebuff it? How do we prove it's not true? So, generally, I tell you to be careful with whom you associate in public, if they're members of the council. If it's just two of you, it's fine.
Well, you know, usually, if it's a basketball game, we're, we're not sitting together.
Correct, exactly.
You know, we're, we're, we're.
You're fine if you're in a certain place.
And we're not talking business, but we're still there, we still see each other, you know, so.
You know, some of the, the times we've had this come up, we, we had a lunch once, you know, a few years ago, as a council, and I came and supervised to make sure you guys weren't violating the rules. We even posted, you know, a public notice that quorum would be present at this time and this date, and we do that for, you know, ribbon cuttings and those types of things. We'll post just a notice ahead of time, saying, quorum's going to be present, and no business is going to be discussed, you're welcome to go watch if you want. And, and that's the reason why, after the meetings conclude, that I always wait around and make sure everybody leaves, because one of the big things that happens quite frequently is, after the meeting adjourns, the council members go out to the parking lot and sit around their vehicle and start talking about city business. And so, to ensure that we're never in a situation where people think after the meeting's over, you guys are sitting around talking about the meetings, I always wait around just to make sure that, at least until a quorum is no longer present. Also, polling is not allowed, so, you know, the mayor can't say, I've got this big policy I want to pass, and then call Kobe and say, hey, will you vote yes on this? Yes. And then call Ms. McGee and say, will you vote yes? Yes. And then, hey, Mr. McDaniel, how are you going to vote? Yes, I'm going to vote yes. Well, he has now violated the Open Meetings Act, because he's got a commitment from all of you guys as to how you're going to vote on this issue, so that's not allowed either. There are a few things that you are allowed to discuss in private, and those are done through executive sessions, and I think you may have been involved in one of those. Generally, I'm going to tell you whether or not you're allowed to have an executive session on an issue or not. It's typically for employee-related issues, for economic development issues, purchasing property and valuing those, investigations or lawsuits. Those are the limited times when you are allowed to have an executive session, they're few and far between, although we tend to have more than most. The thing you have to remember about an executive session is, minutes must be kept, which the mayor always takes care of that, but more importantly, you cannot make any decisions in an executive session. And so, we'll be really careful in the executive session not to poll the room, and, you know, you can discuss it, you can tell people how you feel, but you can't take a vote in an executive session. And so, oftentimes, you know, in an executive session, you know, somebody may have a question, you know, if I wanted to offer a motion to approve this, you know, how would I word this? And, and I'll help with those types of things, but you can't take that vote in an executive session, it has to be done in open meeting after you come back out of executive session. Couple of comments on the Open Records Act, because you won't see that too often on your end, except when it's really bad. And if it gets really bad, you're going to wish probably you'd have done things a little differently. Any record that is created by any city employee, or created by a stakeholder, or someone who does business with the city, or created by members of the council or boards or trustee, are all open records, and people can come in and inspect those records, they can request copies of them. Now, there's a list of exceptions to that, things that we're allowed to keep private, but for your purposes, I want you to assume that everything that is created is something that the public can see and can be published on the front page of the newspaper. When that tends to get coun, council members and board members in trouble is text messages, or emails, those types of things. So know that if you use your cellphone, your private cellphone, or you use a private email to conduct city business, that can potentially be subpoenaed in court in a lawsuit, and you may have to turn over your entire text message records, just so they can see, or an independent third party can tell which ones are responsive to city business and which ones are not. But it can sometimes put you in a very uncomfortable position of having your personal, private cellphone conversations or private emails now being perused through by a court referee or somebody else, and potentially turned over to the public. It's especially problematic when you are saying things that you might not necessarily want published on the front page of the paper. And we've seen instances where that has happened, where text messages, calling people names have been released, and, and they're not flattering on either the city or that person, so.
Can you give me a second to delete the messages?
And see, that brings another point, because we, we have laws.
Never delete, as they say.
We have laws that don't allow us as a municipality to delete any of those records, we have record retention statutes that govern how long we have to keep those records. And so if you were to delete those unflattering things, you've probably now violated another law and are in trouble, so. My, my recommendation, and I think Ryan's going to work on setting up some email accounts for you guys, is that really you, you guys use a city email, and he can put it on your phone, or your computer, or however you want to receive it, but you use a city email account for city business, and limit your use of texting, you know, to bare minimum, honestly, on your private phones. Even notes taken during the meetings can be discoverable, just don't do it, and that way I don't have to collect it and worry about that.
Been there, done that.
The last thing, which is a fun one, and this one got the city manager of, I believe it's Conawal in trouble recently, is dash cam footage, police body footage, most of that is all discoverable through Open Meetings Act, okay? So, in the event, in the unlikely event that you ever get pulled over by one of our law enforcement officers, or a law enforcement officer anywhere, just let them write you the ticket. Don't, don't start saying, well, I'm a city council person, or I'm the city manager, get out of here, I'll fire you, like maybe one in Conawal did recently, because it's going to be on the news before you get back home. So, just know that, that is a part of something that we are in most cases required to release, so. With all of that, I, I tried to breeze through this, and you'll get obviously some more training on it when you do your, your classes.
We've got you enrolled.
But it's a good refresher for the rest of you guys.
Yeah, next month.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Thoughts? Now, you can be willfully prosecuted, because you know better.
Wow, you've been, you've been great tonight.
And you're all lawyers?
Always a real sunshine, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Get your hair out of the room real quick.
Again, thank you, the, I mean, it is good to hear those things, those reminders all the time. At this time, is there any council comments?
Shoot, I'm scared to make any, no.
Wait, you're skipping the business.
Well, there's none listed.
Well, I know, but I was going to talk about.
Okay, well then, let me back up, so you can show us what that is. Is there any new business?
I will generally never allow you to take up items under new business. There is one very small exception to that, if there is something pressing that can't wait till the next meeting, that we didn't know about prior to posting this agenda, or couldn't conceivably known about prior to posting this agenda, you can take it up under new business, only in a regular meeting, cannot take up new business in a special meeting, or an emergency. So, that's a very, very small amount of time that we will take up new business, that's why the mayor skips new business most of the time, because I'm not going to let him take up anything there generally anyways, so.
Hence why I skipped over it this evening. I had a premonition that there was going to be a new business. All right, as we move on, this is, uh, council comments, is there any council comments at this time? Hearing none, because of our city attorney, I will, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
One second.
A motion to second, roll call please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Next meeting of the evening, the Otoka Municipal Authority, which call roll, please.
Ms. Pogue? Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
It's public comment time, if anything's not on the posted agenda, you may address the boards at this time. And hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Have a motion to second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
I'm number two, under the business agenda. Johnny, do I need to read item number one, because there was no item, thank you. Item number two, discussion and or action to approve or reject the payment to H C C C O for pay application number ten in the amount of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Mr. Dilly?
That is on attachment number two, that pertains to the Edworths' improvements being made.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
I have number three, discussion and or possible action on approving the chairman to sign all required documents, should we be awarded a rig grant for replacement truck for the water department, purchase utility bid for the new truck, replace existing tap machine, and purchase a twenty-inch hydraulic ICS saw. The total cost from the quotes is one hundred twenty-eight thousand, ninety-two dollars and eighty-four cents. The rig grant would be in the amount of one hundred thousand, leaving the AMA responsible for the remaining twenty-eight thousand, ninety-two dollars and twenty-eight, or forty, eighty-four cents. We'll get it right in a moment. Mr. Dilly, do you have any explanation on this?
Yes, this is another rig grant that I applied for. Those mics add at a hundred thousand, as long as your total cost are at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we went a little over one twenty-five, but if, if we receive this, they will pay the a hundred thousand, we'll only pay twenty-eight thousand for all these items.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Have a motion to second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Is there any new business? Hearing none, do I hear any trustee comments?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And that's the one I'm looking for.
Second.
Have a motion to second on adjournment, roll call please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Moving to our last meeting of the evening, the Otoka. Moving to our last meeting of the evening, the Tuck City Industrial Development Authority, which call roll, please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Pogue? Mr. McDaniels?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes from September 17th, 2025, and accepting the Economic Development Director's report. Any of these items are wished to be removed from the consent agenda since the business agenda.
I want, let me look at the, I had wrote out something. Oh, I had a question just about the, on the road, so I want to discuss the, I just had a question for Danny.
On the item B?
On economic development.
Okay. Then, do I hear a motion on item A under consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Have a motion, second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Under business, item number one, we've moved item B from the consent agenda down to the business agenda, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Ms. McGee?
Yeah, I had a question. Oh, on the road that was built, that will be building, about the pep grant, you received the grant from the Department of Commerce?
Yes.
I can't remember, Danny, can you talk a little bit about that?
It's, it's one that's been out there for a good while. It was for $3 million. And the decision was made to build a road up at Heavy Industrial to split the land out there.
I remember that, yeah.
So, we have building sites on both sides.
Okay.
And they're actually, they're actually running behind the timelines on this and pretty much every, every other project as well.
Okay, I just couldn't remember anything about that, sorry about that.
No, you're fine. It was one that actually got extended, well, it says there until the end of June of next year.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's going to be tough to make that.
Okay, that's the only question that I had.
Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to approve.
One second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniels?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the payment to Talon Commercial Services for pay application number four in the amount of $145,665.47 for the stage project.
That is attachment number three. That's like the mayor said, application number four. There will be one more, and then that will conclude this particular part of it.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniels?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Any new business? Hearing none, is there any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniels?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you all, and officers, thank you.